Good evening and welcome to the October 1st meeting of Troy City Council. I am Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Bill Twist, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
You bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the city that we live in. We appreciate all those volunteers that give of their time throughout all the events throughout our community. We ask that you be with us this evening and guide us and direct us on what's best for our city, protect those that serve us on police, fire, first responders, and just ask that you would watch over and guide us as we go into the fall season. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seibert?
Present.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
All members are present.
We have an amendment tonight.
I move that council amends the agenda for the October 1st, 2018 meeting of council to add ordinance number 043-2018, replat application of Kettering Medical Center and dedication of a right-of-way.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Lutz and seconded by Mr. Phillips to amend the agenda to add ordinance 043-2018. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
Tonight, we are recognizing the outgoing and incoming members of the Mayor's Youth Council. Mayor Beamish?
Thank you very much, Madam President. In our audience today, we have our newest group, the fifth graders in the Mayor's Youth Council, selected by their elementary schools, and they will serve a two-year term. Also tonight, you'll see a number of our Mayor's Youth Council members in white shirts. These are the outgoing. They're in seventh grade now. They've served their two-year commitment. They passed on their wisdom in a meeting prior to our fifth graders of the things that they enjoy doing, and tonight, we'd like to recognize both. And to do that, I would like to invite our advisors. Tonight, we have with us Grant Kerber, who is an advisor, and Tim Davis, who is one of our advisors. Their spouses also act as advisors, and I don't think either one are here, so I'll turn it over to Grant and Tim. Would you do the introductions, please, and I'll come down?
Can you get the papers first?
Yeah, we'll bring up the fifth graders. We're actually going to have them introduce themselves to you, so we'll bring them up. You all can get out of the other group.
You may have to look there first and then turn around and make sure that everybody sees you as you go back to your seats or out the door.
So we'll start over there. You just want to say your name and what school you represent.
I'm Dave Reynolds and I go to Cookson Elementary.
I'm Amy from Patrick and I go to the elementary.
I'm Andre Manessis and I go to Jefferson.
My name is Colin Lynch and I go to Concord Elementary.
My name is Chloe Thorey and I go to Kyle Elementary.
My name is Lane Jeniles and I go to St. Patrick.
And we have a couple of missing.
We do. We have Alex McAdams and Jalen Smith, one from Haywood, representing as well. Then we have Grace Davis and Kendall Kerber, who will also be on the American Councilship.
Thank you. So, nice round of applause for our youth.
And Tim, yeah, I was going to say, Tim, if they just wanted to take a second up here to get a photo real quick with their parents, for their parents, if they...
Good.
If you want to turn around and look at the audience, yeah, give them a second to get a picture.
Photo bomb.
Okay, I've got the pictures, okay.
Now we have the retiring members, so we'll just call them up in no particular order. Start with C N A Mators.
Tim, can you tell us which school they're from? Do you have that information?
Well, they're all seventh graders.
Oh, they're all at the junior high now. Or Torriston. Or St. Patrick's.
Cooper Doo. And last but not least, we refer to him just as Andrew.
Just want you to know one more thing. This group of seventh graders now serve two-year terms, and I want you to know, I've had many great Mayor's Youth Councils over the 15 years that I've had the privilege to work with young people, and this by far has been one of the most dedicated groups to attend any and all functions that we have had that involves our young people. So, we're going to miss them. We're going to miss them, and it puts a challenge to our new fifth grade group. Thank you.
We all have pictures here. Oh, we're going to do a picture photo shoot. Squish together.
Here. We offered to let them stay for the meeting, but they opted to leave. So, I think...
Me too.
Can we go?
Along with their advisor, right, Tim?
There's one dedicated.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the... Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the September 17th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, September 17, 2018. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that legislation be approved, the ordinance number 039-2018, for the Downtown Riverfront Overlay District for Troy Hayner Cultural Center. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared to hide a new date for the U D River stewards' members to camp out at Treasure Island Park. Resolution number R40-28, opposing FCC regulations related to wireless infrastructure, was given first reading. Ordinance number 039-2018, approving application for Troy Hayner DRO District, was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance number 041-2018, authorizing use of Treasure Island Park by River stewards' first reading. Resil... Ordinance number 042-2018, reappropriation was given first reading. Following an executive session, council adjourned at 7:38 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Will we accept the minutes?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Just a second. I shoved it someplace. Sorry, I have to slay my roll call. Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Approved.
Mrs. Knight, please read the minutes of the September 20th special meeting of council.
Okay, and prior to the council meeting, I provided the members of council with a corrected page that showed that the legislation had had second readings. Minutes of council, special meeting, September 20, 2018. The notice of special meeting was read and signed. Resolution R40-2018, opposing FCC regulations related to wireless infrastructure, second reading and adopted. Ordinance 041-2018, authorizing use of Treasure Island Park by River stewards', second reading and adopted. Ordinance number 042-2018, a reappropriation was given, second reading and adopted. Council then adjourned at 7:40 AM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Will you accept the minutes? I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
There are no committee reports this evening. Are there any citizen comments on any committee reports or agenda items this evening? If so, there's a two-minute time limit. Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance. Ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance 043-2018.
Ordinance number 043-2018, ordinance approving the Kettering Health Network Troy Medical Center to replat in the city of Troy, Ohio, dedicating a right-of-way and declaring an emergency. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. It was also reviewed and recommended by committee earlier. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
I do have a question, Madam President.
Mrs. Oda?
Can we clarify the emergency?
Well, the emergency, as we had stated at the committee meeting, is related to keeping the project on track. It is in the middle of the project. This is part of a planned development that they're going to submit that will include some expansion of the building in the back, and so to be able to get that process started, they need to get this done as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions?
A move for suspension.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any further discussion from council? Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
There are not.
Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Well, thanks again to letting us share the incoming and the outgoing members of the Mayor's Youth Council, and I think I've shared enough information about that. I would just call your attention to the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast and Gathering, and that'll be October 13th. That precedes what another Pink Ribbon Girls event that'll take place on October 19th, which is a Friday, down on our living room of our community, that being downtown Troy. I... The reason I put those together is Heather Salazar, who is the president and CEO of the Pink Ribbon Girls Movement, will be our featured speaker at the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and so it would be good to listen to her story in preparation for the Pink Ribbon Girls event October 19th. Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Well, I will apologize in advance. I know you were all anticipating a short meeting, but if you'll sit back, I do have several items to talk about tonight. One, at the request of the President of Council, so I'll share the blame with Mrs. Baker. Several items, though. Briefly, the leaf pickup starts this year, today. Not sure how many leaf piles we have out there, but they will start accumulating soon. Reminder is that please leave them in a pile at the curb, away from the storm sewer if you can, and we expect that we will have three to four rounds, depending on how quickly the leaves come down and when the frost and that white stuff starts, hopefully later than sooner. Did want to give you an update on what you may have read in the paper, and that is Mayor Beamish led a delegation of city staff, I guess, Assistant Director Funderberg, City Engineer Jill Rhodes, Assistant City Engineer Kristi Butera, our two chiefs. And I went to last Thursday's county commission meeting. At the end of the meeting, I made a presentation, informational presentation, to them regarding the Riverside Phase Two project, that being the project where we will do several things between, roughly between the entrance to Community Park on Riverside, north to approximately Orchard Drive. Removing all the asphalt, top and base. We will not be widening the road, which was an issue 18 years ago when we contemplated doing Phase Two the first time. We will replace the six-inch water line with a 12-inch water main. We will extend eight-inch sewer main from Community Park north, and then another section from Duke Park south and east through Orchard Drive. Remove the sidewalk north of the cemetery chapel on the east side of Riverside Drive. We'll shift the current alignment of Riverside Drive, again, keeping with the same width east, so that the east edge of the pavement matches up with the west edge of the current sidewalk north of the cemetery. Install an eight-foot-wide off-street wreck trail along the west side of the new Riverside alignment, but keep within the right-of-way. And to pause for a minute on that item, as I explained to the commissioners, there are two primary issues and reasons that we want to do that on the west side of the road, and one is safety and two is connectivity. Related to safety, the posted speed limits along Riverside go from 25 to 35 and then ultimately to 45 north of the project area. We have two mid-block crossings within the project's scope. We have an average of 200 pedestrians or cyclists that cross those crosswalks on a daily basis, and that was confirmed within the last month with video counters, so those are very... That's very recent data. We have several future potential projects, some ideas, the vision that we've had primarily for Duke Park, which include a baseball complex, additional soccer fields, mini golf facility, splash pad, and moving the park maintenance facility from in front of the arena to centralize it in Duke Park. Those are not funded, those are not imminent, but they are ideas, and they will only increase the traffic that we have on Riverside. It's much safer for pedestrians and cyclists who want to travel from, to and from Community Park and Duke Park. It's direct connectivity between the two parks, and it supports the initiative of the Miami County Park District ultimately to pursue a grant to connect, further connect north, the wreck trail back to the Eldine Bridge and north to Pick One and beyond. The... Back to safety for a minute. While there would be an average, there are 12 properties along just west of the right-of-way, adjacent to where the wreck trail would be. An average based on the national standards, anywhere from 60 to 100 backups, if you will, in and out of driveways there between all, when you take all 12 properties into account. So that would be 60 versus 200 cyclists or pedestrians and possible impact points versus the fact that we have 2,000 cars. Again, that's very... That's recent data that we took traffic counts on. 2,000 cars traveling that section of road on a daily basis, and again, the two mid-block crossings that those 200 cyclists and walkers would be crossing. In addition, other project elements would include creating a fourth-foot tree lawn on the west side of Riverside, east of the recreation trail, and then installing catch basins, curbs, and gutters to manage the stormwater drainage. As we explained to the commissioners, this is, this property, or this project, I should say, is 50% in the township and 50% in the city. We are, because this is a public works, Ohio Public Works Commission project that was budgeted by us, 100% of it would be paid by the city. We're not asking for any funding from the township or the county. Again, it creates safe access without having to cross two fairly busy mid-block crossings. One of the concerns of the property owners, unlike sidewalks that could be on the west side, the wreck trail would be 100% maintained by the city. They would be held harmless from any issues related to maintaining, clearing, et cetera, of the recreation trail, and so that's a positive as well. We would be using the current right-of-way. We would not be asking for any of their front yards at all. Again, we are not increasing the road widths. As this is part of, part of this project is to extend sewer main in all of those properties as well as several properties north, and also those on Orchard Drive are not currently connected to our sewer system, but rather are on individual septic systems. From an environmental standpoint and to incentivize them, we are offering to partner with them to get them off of their septic system and hook to the sewer main as part of the project. Next step, so the commissioners asked several questions. They understood the jurisdiction that they have and what our next steps would be with the county engineer, Paul Hues Camp, and that is that we will submit a right-of-way permit application to them, to Paul, to Mr. Hues Camp, at which point he will review them to make sure that we follow the engineering standards of the state and the county, and after that, then they've agreed that they would approve that. Concurrent with that, then, as soon as we get the design finalized to a point, we are having some dialogue with the property owners, those that want to hook up to the sewer system, and those that do, we will finalize the design so that we can get a report and a recommendation to you as soon as possible so that we can get authorization to bid and contract with a construction company. Time is of the essence. This is about a month, a month and a half behind schedule if we want to begin construction late winter, or I guess winter at the end of this year, early next year, so you should expect to see that report and hopefully an assignment as soon as we can get the designs done.
Any idea of weeks or how long that will be?
Well, I'm hoping no later than the beginning of November. Maybe pushing it to get it by the next meeting of October, but the first meeting in November is hoped so that we can keep the project moving forward.
Would those property owners be required to annex into the city in order to have sewer hookups?
Yes, they would. Yes.
Okay.
So, any other questions about that?
I have two questions, but you go ahead.
Go right ahead.
Just, you may have responded, Patrick. I, we lost some computers today, but you're not doing the three houses further north, right? There's like a little cut-in and then there's three more houses.
So there are, on the west side, there are 12 properties that are impacted, and then there are four more impacted. They would be included.
Okay.
And then the 10 properties on Orchard Drive.
On Orchard, but not on, the ones on Riverside are already in sewer, right? The ones on the right-hand side?
The ones on the east side.
They're in the city, because that's what I used to...
They're in the city, but they're outside the project's scope, so the sewer main would not be accessible to them at this point.
Okay.
But as we get into Phase Three and Four...
But so all the houses on the west side, all the way up to the entrance to Duke Park, are what we're talking about?
Not quite to the entrance of Duke Park, but close, yes.
Okay, so the three house, you know the three houses, four houses I'm talking about?
Four houses.
Okay, so those are included.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had, I drove it just in anticipation of this meeting, and we briefly talked about this one other time. They're, I don't know if we can even control this, but a lot of the mailboxes are across the street. Can we bring them back over? So, I mean, we're talking about safety, and you have people walking back and forth across that street.
And we are, and we're talking to the U.S. Postal Service. They are the ones that dictate the location. However, if we're realigning the road east, that takes away the green space for them to put a mailbox there, which makes more sense than, of course, if we're creating a tree lawn on the west side, to have the mailboxes there. So, we have initiated contact with them. The postmaster's been talking to his bosses to see what can be done.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Off of that particular postal issue, does that mean that potentially a cluster box situation could arise versus individual mailboxes? Or is that just one of the many options that are out there?
That's not an option that I think anybody prefers, just because, you know, the properties are kind of spread out. But again, that is, that would be dictated by the postal service, U.S. Post Office. I've not heard of that idea as one of the options, but that would be up to them.
And the, of the 12 houses on the west side of the street, how many of those are in the city and in versus county?
They are all, they are all township.
All of them. All right, thank you.
Marty, you have a question?
Yes, Mrs. Oda.
Does everybody have to be on board with this, or does it have to be all or none, or can people choose to take part?
No, if they can be, if they can be annexed, there are certain requirements that you have to meet as far as the amount of perimeter of your property that is contiguous with the city borders. If, and so far, those that have opted in are eligible and can be done, but if it's something where they want to do that, but they're not contiguous yet, then we could sign an agreement with them saying that when they are, they would agree to annex in at that point. And we have done that before, where somebody has needed service, but they've not been contiguous, and then when they become contiguous because somebody annexes in next to the city
Okay. There will be further, you know, opportunity for discussion on this at committee level.
Can I ask one more thing?
Go ahead.
How many are in approval? How many disagree?
We're still discussing with them. There are several of them that are still talking about it. Technically, the deadline was today and the business day. Several of them have contacted us with additional questions, and they wanted a day or two to think about it first and discuss the business side of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Two more.
Go ahead.
Two more, sorry. An easy one, Halloween trick-or-treat, October thirtieth, six to eight p.m. It's Tuesday, it's not the Wednesday. And then finally, after being postponed the first time this past Saturday, the UD River Stewards, which is a program, an interdisciplinary program at the University of Dayton, there were forty students that are in that class and in those studies. They came to Troy all day on Saturday, starting with a canoe ride down from Pickwa to Treasure Island. The mayor greeted them. The Troy Fire Department did a water rescue demonstration for them. Scott Meyer of the Miami County Park District made a presentation, some education about the perks in water conservation. Diana Thompson from the Miami County Visitors and Convention Bureau talked about the economic impact of the riverway and what it means to Troy and the region. And then the forty students, all camped out overnight, floating in the river, anchored in the floating tents. And if you want to see a picture of that, we do have it on our social media. And Sunday morning, they all were in very good spirits, apparently. I did not, I was not able to greet them, but they've already talked about possibly doing it again next year.
Who paid for those tents for them to use?
So the tents were a combination of the city. The Troy Foundation provided a grant. The, let's see, Ethan Smith of Smith Fly donated a couple for use, as well as Adventures on the Great Miami loaned us a couple, I believe, a couple of them as well. There were sixteen of them total.
Did the city not pay for any of those, then? The city did not pay for, buy any of those?
No, that's who I said first.
Oh, you said the city was...
The city was the first one.
Okay, okay. And is there an intended use form after this event? I mean, do we have...
Future programs on Treasure Island. We'll be talking about that as we create the program activity for next season. Again, UD, the River Stewards, you know, they really liked it. We think that there'll be several other groups that may want to do the same.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything further?
No, I'm done. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Curver?
Madam President, I just want to echo what the mayor indicated about this youth group. This seventh-grade class was just a really enthusiastic, involved group, and it was, I think, just a testament to the city, and it was just neat to work with them.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Friggy's not here tonight. One other question. Mr. Titterington, how much did it cost, or is it costing for the city to paint the poles and posts and so forth in the downtown area? And what was the amount of that total contract?
Okay, the total contract is, I'll give you an approximate number, I don't have the exact number. Forty-four thousand.
Okay.
That is part of the bigger project. It includes the new wayfinding signage with the additional parking signs, as well as the landmark signs. All total, that was approximately ninety thousand dollars. That was partly in our budget, as well as a significant Troy Foundation grant from last year.
Yeah, okay. Any comments from city council members this evening?
I just have a question.
Mrs. Oda?
So are you saying the city now owns some of those shawl tents?
Yes.
How many?
Ten.
And what are we going to do with them?
Well, as I stated, we're going to build those into future programming with programming Treasure Island events. River Fest would be one idea, UD River Stewards coming back, any other educational programs that might come up as well.
And what was the cost for those ten?
I think the tents were approximately nine hundred dollars apiece. And again, we received five thousand dollars from the Troy Foundation as a grant to offset some of the cost.
They list for a little bit higher than that, but they probably gave you a discount.
We can rent it out to you if you want. You can try it out.
As long as you assign a hold harmless, that's what we require.
The one that comes with a bathroom.
Any comments, any comments from city staff this evening? Any comments from anyone in the audience?
I've got three things I'd like to talk about. One, going out west, Main Street, where Veteran has been doing a lot of work, the road is like a washboard. Maybe the city could have them come back and put a little more asphalt in them holes or something and fill them back in, so it ain't so rough.
Whereabouts, Mr. Curver?
Well, all the way from Bonded all the way out. To, from Bonded to Trade Square West, I guess, to the railroads.
Yeah, be from Melville Street. Bonded isn't there anymore, is it?
Well, I'm the old man, I'm the old man here.
I remember the...
Yeah, I'm the old man. I don't know what it is now, but I prefer to this Bonded. I still look at it in the past. And another issue is, well, the two things, they go hand in hand, and I think it would be who the city to do it. The citizens would realize what's going on a little bit, and that's to go back and get that tar truck or tar van or whatever that thing was, it pulled behind the thing, and the guy would go along and spray the asphalt and the curbs. We've got grass growing across a lot of the streets, and when you get grass and cracks like that, in the winter, it thaws and freezes, thaws and freezes. It's not doing the streets any good, and the root system isn't doing the streets any good. So I think, and the other thing would be to get these catch basins and clean them out. I mean, it's like the old man with a hole in his roof. It only bothers me when it rains, but if you get it before it rains, maybe it ain't going to be a big problem. It's called preventative maintenance, and I think it would be who the city to do that. The citizens would see this being done. The strong part, the citizens, don't really see a whole lot being done that affects them.
Regarding the crack sealing, Mr. Titterington?
Yeah, well, regarding both, we do a lot of that annually. We continue to do catch basins, particularly after we have rain and we know which ones are not clearing as quickly as they should. We do have a preventive maintenance program where we will jet-vac the catch basins, and we'll continue to do that. We now have two jet-vacs that we use out of water and sewer distribution, the maintenance staff. Regarding the crack sealing, when the weather starts to cool down in the next few weeks, we have a significant list, like we do every year. We do a large amount. We have twelve to fifteen pallets of crack sealer, as well as the machine, and so that program will be kicking off. We do not do that earlier, because if you do, the asphalt is too hot, the tar does not cool down and harden, then we end up getting a lot of complaints because car tires kick it up, get it on the sides of their vehicles, and it just creates a mess.
I understand where it comes from there.
That's the way we've done it forever.
But I don't think you, you know, you say this is done, what, annually?
Yes.
I think maybe you need to put a more, a few more periods in that annually.
We do it every year, and we've done it every year.
Well, I think you need to get more times in a year to do this stuff. One time a year isn't sufficient. I'm telling you right now, one time a year is not sufficient for the city of Troy. You need to do it a little more often, spend a little bit of money for the citizens. And I hope that the council will see some of this stuff and put a little pressure on some of these people to do some of that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments or questions?
Madam President, I move the council recess into executive session for discussion of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
It's been moved by Mr. Lutz and seconded by Mr. Phillips to recess into executive session. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swayze?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
We do not expect to take any further action this evening following the executive session. You may stay if you wish. We will be returning to regular session in order to adjourn. So thank you for being here this evening. Have a safe and peaceful week.
Adjourn out of executive session?
Second.
In return to regular session?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Lutz and seconded by Mr. Phillips to return to regular session. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Swayze?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in regular session.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.